Welcome and thank you for being here. Joining us for the City Council regular meeting this Monday evening on September 18th, I now call this meeting to order. I invite you all to join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oops there. Okay. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to—
Through the mayor, would you like me to do roll call?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, keeping us on track. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure. Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Councilmember Newsom.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. And thank you to the deputy mayor from Vietnam for joining us. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate for those attending in person. Please complete a request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you'll be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in by phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We are going to start our ceremonial item of honoring the fish market and creating a proclamation for Fish Market Day. And we would like to invite Mr. Dwight Colton, President and General Manager, Simon Johnson, up to the stage. Please join us.
What could have made a bit of major power outage today in San Mateo, which he's been bustling around the building?
Well, thank you for being here, and please share with Dwight, we're thinking of him. And I will read the proclamation and then join you to present it. Whereas the fish market seafood market—the fish market seafood market restaurant has been a cherished establishment in the city of San Mateo for an impressive 41 years. And whereas during this time, it has consistently delivered expertly-prepared, fresh and high-quality dining to San Mateans, creating a welcoming and friendly environment for all. Whereas the dedication to excellence displayed by the fish market has not only enriched our culinary experiences but left a positive impact on the hearts of millions of patrons. And whereas the fish market's strong commitment to treating employees as family has demonstrated a deep-rooted ethos of community and compassion. And whereas the establishment has played a role in our local economy with storefronts and fishery that stretch from South San Francisco to San Jose. The San Mateo location with its iconic top-of-the-market restaurant overlooking the lagoon, providing an elegant and sophisticated experience to the city's dining scene. And whereas in recent years, the fish market has further solidified its status as a community pillar through its philanthropic effort, between 2019 and 2023, it spearheaded fundraising and initiatives that resulted in over $120,000 donated to nonprofit organizations in California. Their support for the National Breast Cancer Foundation and contributions to the World Central Kitchen have not only raised research funds but have also helped feed families in regions affected by political unrest, spreading hope and nourishment to those in need. And whereas we proudly and wholeheartedly recognize the fish market seafood market restaurant for its remarkable contribution to the community, we commend its decades of dedicated culinary excellence, community engagement, and philanthropy—philanthropy, excuse me. As a beacon of positivity and goodwill in our community, the fish market stands as a shining example of what can be achieved through hard work, compassion, and a commitment to making the community a better place for all. With deep appreciation, you will be greatly missed.
Thank you very much.
And lastly, now therefore I, Emerance Lee, Mayor of the City of San Mateo, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby designate Wednesday, September 20th, 2023, as Fish Market Appreciation Day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I did want to offer a chance to give remarks for council and also yourself. This is such a cherished community asset that we're so sorry to see go. And 41 years is a long time. So I wanted to ask anyone—oh, which—Councilmember Hedges.
So I live across the lagoon from the fish market. And we cherish the days when you would send a little electric boat out to all the docks. And we always used that event when we had visitors from out of state to call for the boat and have your restaurant come over and pick us up. And if we tipped the driver really well, he'd take us for a ride along the lagoon.
That's why I couldn't find him.
So we've enjoyed years and years. I've lived actually on the east side of that lagoon longer than your establishment. So we enjoyed you from the very first, even when you rented it part of it to orphan nannies.
Oh.
That's it.
So my family owned a printing company in Hayward, California, just across the bridge. And we lived in San Mateo. And for over 20 years, my dad, at least twice a week, held court at the fish market. So it's a place near and dear to my heart, and I'm getting teared up because I think of my dad. But I wish you all the best, and we're definitely going to miss you in our community.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate that.
Very much.
I'll just note that I grew up in San Mateo. And while I personally did not frequent the fish market as much as some of my other colleagues, you know, I certainly had friends, family, and neighbors who did. And I had a schoolmate who worked at the fish market. And, you know, 41 years is, you know, a legacy that bridges generations of San Mateans. Clearly, you'll be missed by all in the room and more. Thank you for exemplary service in our city.
It's a pleasure.
I'll add that there—I think a lot of us in the community have memories and made memories in the fish market, and I'm myself included. And most recently, I gathered with a number of new fellows from the San Francisco Foundation, who—we kicked off our five-year fellowship with the foundation at the fish market. And so there are lots of firsts, and that you all have hosted, maybe unbeknownst to you. And those memories will be cherished. So thank you so much. And I want to offer you a chance to share your thoughts.
Through the mayor, Deputy Mayor, has her hand raised too?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Deputy Mayor. Please go ahead.
No worries, no worries. I probably am bringing good wishes to you from furthest away. I'm in Hanoi, Vietnam right now. And I just wanted to let you know that our family also has been a longtime patron of the fish market. And the last meal I had before I left to go overseas was at the fish market. That dungeon's crap, Louis, is going to be so difficult to replace. And I also wanted to acknowledge the great work that you do for all your employees and what a family it is. So thank you. Good luck to everyone. And we appreciate your efforts to find work and opportunities for all the employees as you close this chapter and open up new ones.
Thank you very much. Yeah, as of today, actually, 32 years ago, I joined the fish market. So today is my 32-year anniversary of the fish market. And I've started from the bottom and came through the top. And I've run that restaurant three times. I've run the Santa Clara restaurant three times, and was the trainer for the entire company for 10-plus years as well, too. It hasn't really hit me that we are closing. It's just been enormously busy. So emotionally and physically draining, and emotionally draining it has been. But I wouldn't have—you know, the band of employees—I don't even call employees, staff, partners, that we have is why we're there. As you said, Bob Wilson, Fred Duckett, it was a family-oriented company concept. Uncompromised quality was always at the top, and the employee and staff member always came first. As Bob says, without a happy employee, you don't have a happy guest. So it was a real simple philosophy. And for those who bought into it, like myself, 32 years plus, we'll be closing the doors on Wednesday. But I can't—it's been a tremendous pleasure to go through it with all my staff members. That's really the most important thing. And as I said, it hasn't really hit me personally, especially within that number of years. And I'm sure on Thursday, when we're saying our goodbyes, it's really going to do it. But I want to say thank you, everybody in San Mateo, because we have been embedded, whether it be through parishes, or schools, or crab feeds. It's been a pleasure. So thank you very much for the honor. I greatly appreciate it. And we, as Dwight Colton does as well, too, who was washing dishes this morning since our power went out for over five and a half hours. So it's part of the business. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure.
One, two, three. Yay, Fish Market!
Yay, Fish Market! Thank you very much.
It's hard to say goodbye. Next up, we have Home Maintenance Awards. And I'd like to invite President of San Mateo United, Thomas Morgan, to join me. I believe you'll be leading us through a presentation, and I will be passing up the certificates of awards.
That's correct. So, Honorable Mayor, City Council, city staff, and my fellow San Mateans, it's a privilege to be here tonight to present to you the 14th Annual Outstanding Home Maintenance Award. San Mateo United is the umbrella organization of all the active neighborhood and homeowners' associations. And each of the winners tonight was nominated and voted for by their individual association or neighborhood. And we also want to thank the founder of the process, Anna Kure, the President Emeritus of San Mateo United. Without her, this ceremony and presentation wouldn't have happened. And I believe at the end of—from June to September, I believe the winners of the—in the presentation will be shown on the City of San Mateo Channel 26. So without further ado, if we could start recognizing the homeowners. So first up, from the Beersford Hillsdale neighborhood, we have Paul Uahara. Please come up. And also, the neighborhood rep for Beersford Hillsdale.
Congratulations.
And from Sugarloaf, we have Susan Kazarian. Is Susan available? If not, we also would like to invite Bob Kiss, the neighborhood rep, up. From the North Central neighborhood, we would like to recognize Anna Martinez. Anna, if you would mind coming up. And Joanne Bennett is the neighborhood rep.
Thank you.
And the final winner is—from the Baywood neighborhood is Dave and Anna Ridgway.
Thank you.
Yes, let's squeeze in for a photo with the council and join.
It's a room.
All right, just come on, guys. One, two, three. Congratulations.
And from Sugarloaf, we have Susan Kazarian. Is Susan available? If not, we also would like to invite Bob Kiss, the neighborhood rep, up. From the North Central neighborhood, we would like to recognize Anna Martinez. Anna, if you would mind coming up. And Joanne Bennett is the neighborhood rep.
Thank you.
And the final winner is—from the Baywood neighborhood is Dave and Anna Ridgway.
Thank you.
Yes, let's squeeze in for a photo with the council and join.
It's a room.
All right, just come on, guys. One, two, three. Congratulations.
And from Sugarloaf, we have Susan Kazarian. Is Susan available? If not, we also would like to invite Bob Kiss, the neighborhood rep, up. From the North Central neighborhood, we would like to recognize Anna Martinez. Anna, if you would mind coming up. And Joanne Bennett is the neighborhood rep. And the final winner is—from the Baywood neighborhood is Dave and Anna Ridgway.
Thank you.
Yes, let's squeeze in for a photo with the council and join.
It's a room.
All right, just come on, guys. One, two, three. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you so much to Anna Kure for creating that wonderful tradition, and for all of you for having so much community pride and helping to beautify our neighborhoods. It's really appreciated. And life can be so busy, and so to take the time to make your space beautiful for the rest of us to enjoy is very appreciated. So moving on to the consent calendar, Deputy City Clerk, would you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number three, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number four, Tobacco Retailer Permit Amendments Ordinance Adoption. Item number five, Zoning Code Amendments for Planning Application Extensions Ordinance Adoption. Item number six, Delaware Safe Routes to School Corridor Grant Funding Acceptance. Item number seven, Wastewater Treatment Plant Grit, Rag, and Scum Hauling Disposal Agreement. Item number eight, Central Park Tennis Court Garage Structure Improvements Contract. Item number nine, Transit Center Restroom Remodel Project Appropriation and Contract. Item nine has been pulled from the agenda at the request of staff for future consideration. Item number 10, 41st Ave, Pacific Boulevard Trash Capture Project Agreement and Appropriation. Item number 11, Deferred Compensation Program Agreement. Item number 12, Racial Equity Art Project Revised Agreement. Item number 13, Liquid Ambar Street Tree Pruning Agreement. Item number 14, San Mateo County Gang Intelligence Unit Agreement. Item number 15, Community Welfare and Crisis Response Team Mental Health Partnership Agreement. Item number 16, 2022-23 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report Adoption. Item number 17, Collaborative Solutions LLC Enterprise Planning System Implementation Services and Workday Delivery Assurance Supplemental Budget Appropriation and Change Orders. Item number 18, South Bayside Waste Management and Authority Acquisition of Real Property Approval. And finally, item number 19, Delegate Authority to the City Attorney to Settle Claims and Litigation Approval.
Thank you. Deputy City Clerk, is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Yes, I'd like to pull item six.
Item six. Any other? Okay. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on any of the consent calendar items? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
I have no speaker slips in the council chambers. I have one hand raised on Zoom. Henry, your hand has been up for a while. Are you intending to comment on consent calendar? Please leave your hand up. If you're not commenting on consent calendar, can you please lower your hand? Thank you. No comment.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there a motion from council to approve consent calendar items? Let's see, three through five and seven through 19.
Move approval of those consent items.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Sorry.
Yes, Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Can I just ask a question about item nine? Because I believe it's been pulled, right?
Yeah, it's not for consideration, so I'm not listing it.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Councilmember Hedges, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just have one question. I'm very interested in protected bike lanes. For a number of years, I rode my bike at 11 o'clock at night home from work along the area where these bike lanes are. But one thing concerned me. I never saw anywhere in any of the items whether we intend to pull any parking from Delaware. Does anyone here know the answer to that?
We have our Public Works Director, Brad Obi, answering that question.
Welcome, Brad—or Mr. Underwood.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and City Council members, I don't know the answer to that question. I apologize for not knowing that right now.
Unless I know the answer to that, I can't vote for this.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor for item number six?
We need public comment on this item, too.
Oh, excuse me. Let's open it up for public comment.
Is anyone intending to comment on item number six? I have no hands raised and no speaker slips.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll close public comment. And is there a motion for item six?
Actually, I have a question.
Yes?
Speaker.
Does anyone know if we jeopardize losing the potential grant, if we push this and bring it back next month?
I don't think it would jeopardize the grant if we wait two weeks for the next meeting.
Okay. Is there interest among the council to get some more follow-up information?
I would move for follow-up information.
Okay.
Do we need a second then?
Okay, it sounds like there's interest and consensus to get some more information and bring it back. Are we okay with that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that takes care of the consent calendar items. And we can open it up to public comment for items that are not on the consent calendar. So members of the public wishing to comment on any items not appearing on the agenda may address the council at this time. State law prevents the council from taking action on any matters not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up, and this public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have four speaker slips and one hand raised on Zoom.
Excellent. Thank you.
If you—you still have time to fill out a slip? They're available in the back of the room and up front here. Okay. So we're going to do three minutes?
Yes.
Okay. So the very first speaker, I'm going to take in order, the first speaker under three minutes is Irina Mavridis.
Welcome.
I just want to say I love Fish Market. I had my nursing school graduation there, and it's heartbreaking. Thank you for this time. On July 12th of this year, the commissioners of the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission conducted an appeal hearing for a permit of a so-called small cell wireless facility on a city-owned light pole in front of 732 10th Avenue. 27 neighbors signed the appeal, and a number attended the appeal hearing. Many are here today. We cited evidence showing that the small cell tower would result in diminished property values and increased fire hazards, and is in violation of FCC Microwave Radiation Exposure Guidelines, as explained in the August 21 US Courts of Appeal ruling mandated case Environmental Health Trust versus FCC. In the hearing, the city of San Mateo staff and commissioners were unfortunately negligent in their duties by relying nearly exclusively on City Muni Code Chapter 1710 and the 21 Design Standards for Wireless Facilities, but ignoring that the outcome was not consistent with all federal and state laws, federal NEPA or NHPA requirements, and through US Court of Appeals rulings from 2019 to 21 rulings that bind all cities in the US. In our September 15th public comment letter to the city council, San Mateo residents have noticed to the city that we have taken action against this cell tower by filing a complaint with the FCC, citing the substantial written evidence in that letter. While the FCC reviews the complaint, Crown Castle is barred from completing the installation or operating the cell tower until the FCC renders its decision, which could take six to 12 months or longer. A common outcome for such complaints to the FCC like this is for the applicant to withdraw the permit and move the equipment to another location. Alternatively, the city could revoke the cell tower per permit procedure outlined in pages 13 to 14 of San Mateo's 21 Design Standards for Wireless Facilities. The commissioners admitted their lack of training, lack of knowledge, and insufficient review of the evidence during the appeal hearing. The commissioners and city staff made errors and false statements throughout the hearing by stating the following as examples, all quotes. Quote, "My ignorance of how these permits work will come through," was said by a commissioner. Quote, "Please excuse my ignorance on the technical aspects of RF emissions." Quote, "I only had the last two hours to look at the stuff," and then asked who checks for needed coverage or not. The city's legally preempted, meaning as a city, we're not allowed to make any sort of determination on the technical aspects of coverage, which is false, per the 2005 Ninth Circuit case MetroPCS versus San Francisco. And the city engineer said that RF emissions are evaluated at the ground, they're at safe levels, but the engineer had no expertise about biological or medical literature on this topic and is not qualified to deem any level of RF emissions as safe. The bottom line is that the appointed commissioners are not sufficiently trained on applying telecom laws or following the duties, obligations, and authorities of the city, which must provide actual public safety and privacy to its residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker—and do we—I'm sorry, no. We—in the City Council chamber, this is a formal meeting. We don't allow applause, cheering, jeering, anything like that, because all opinions are welcome out here. And we don't want to up to the microphone. We don't want to have a chilling effect on anybody. to have a chilling effect on anybody feeling comfortable giving their opinion. Okay? So I'm going to ask you not to do that. Next speaker, please come up, is Maria Mavridis.
Thank you for my time. In the July twelfth of this year's appeal hearing, the commissioners and city staff did not understand that the city is bound by three relevant U.S. Court of Appeals rulings in the D.C. Circuit from two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty-one, as detailed in the public comment letter we sent for tonight's city council meeting. Ketawa versus FCC, a ruling which vacated the very definition of small wireless facilities and upheld that every single cell tower must undergo NEPA and NHPA review, which the one in question did not. Two, Mozilla versus FCC, a ruling which reclassified broadband internet as information service and stated that the desire to provide information service qualifies for no federal preemption. Three, Environmental Health Trust versus FCC, a ruling which vacated the FCC's attempt to extend its radio frequency microwave exposure guideline to any frequency above six thousand megahertz. The cell tower considered in the appeal is equipped with three Ericsson Street Macro sixty-seven oh five antennas, each of which transmit pulse radio frequency microwave radiation at twenty-eight thousand megahertz. Such antennas can deliver only wireless information service for broadband internet, but not wireless telecommunications services for wireless phone calls. Per EHT versus FCC ruling, there is no FCC RF Microwave Radiation Exposure Guidelines for twenty-eight thousand megahertz, rendering the permit invalid until the FCC completes its court-mandated work in that ruling, which mandated the FCC to not extend its RF Microwave Radiation Exposure Guideline above six thousand megahertz, and to explain how its existing radio frequency microwave radiation guideline adequately protects people and the environment from the demonstrated adverse biological impacts shown in the twenty-seven volumes, eleven thousand-plus pages of scientific evidence accepted by the judges. The judges based their rulings on the evidence, and this is the same evidence that has been submitted to the council last Friday. A permit revocation for this cell tower is justified for these reasons in the city's twenty-twenty-one Design Standards for Wireless Facilities. There is evidence of fraud or misrepresentation of material effect by Crown Castle in its printed submissions and its appeal hearing presentation. The use in question wireless telecommunications service has ceased to exist because the cell towers only provide wireless information service. A substantive change of law occurred with the rulings in the three cases cited above, and the city did not fully understand the liability transfers occurring by the city allowing Crown Castle to attach wireless antennas to a city-owned and maintained light pole, and this makes the city jointly and severely liable for any injuries, illnesses, or deaths of these antennas as detailed in the EHT versus FCC and this letter, two thousand seventeen, from attorney Harry Lehman to the California Legislature, which I'm submitting into evidence this evening. It's time for a thorough review and changes to the existing cell facilities and public right-of-way policies in San Mateo. And additional FCC complaints similar to the one we filed against the cell tower could be made against so many others so-called small wireless telecommunications facilities operating in or planned for the City of San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker. I'll take them. Thank you.
Thank you. There should be plenty, I think.
Thank you. Our next speaker in the council chamber is Yuen Tang.
Thank you for your service. I'm a new mom. I have a nine-month-old boy, and I bought a house some a year ago at West Capitrino Way to prepare for his coming. So now he's right to his nursery room. There is a small console going to be installed at seven twenty-nine West Capitrino Way in Baywood Community. So exactly that will be installed at a height of sixteen feet, so exactly the same height as my second-story building. So I feel I made a bad decision, like, okay, I welcomed my baby boy in that in that radiation higher than much acceptable level. So I'm regretting every now and then, but, you know. So that's why I'm here and I'm appealing. And not only my boy is gonna have this, my neighborhood, so Adam across the street, they have three young kids, and Ben next to me, he has two young kids. Often, we have like, okay, family, so we run birthday parties, so we invite other kids to our front yard. Now I forever won't have that chance to run a birthday party in my front yard, because I couldn't put like, I don't know, some slides there, and because that's gonna be high up, that's gonna expose all the children and the kids to that higher radiation level. And they couldn't play in my front yard, you know, kids climbing, so they go higher up. And today, the installation on the underground is happening. It's a lot of noises, a lot of ashes, it even damaged like a bush. So I just think I presented that to the last S and I meeting. Based on my research, I believe Crown Castle made it like, select our location by misrepresenting a material fact. And imagine that, five hundred feet, how could a sixteen-foot-high-street pole would be the most feasible one, and with a very big tree nearby? So therefore, I'm here today to ask your help. So I know city has a neutral stance. I think it's time to make the change. No neutral stance anymore. Please go hand in hand with us to protect the interests of the community, like City of San Bruno, City of San Francisco, and the City of San Jose, all are suing FCC for this unfair thing. And they are mailing like Titan audience to protect the citizens in the neighborhoods such as Sacramento, like they have a minimum twenty-five-feet-height requirement. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Morgan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. These comments I'm about to make are as a private resident. I'm pretty much fully back in the office, two days in San Francisco and three days at the Bay Meadows office, and I've noticed at two thousand South Delaware, those apartments on the former police department site has had for rent signs for at least the past three months. I know that they've had, I know they have a shared driveway, and I'm just concerned they might be trying to keep those apartments empty to meet their TDM requirement. And I'm wondering if those apartments are not being rented, if a compromise could be made where the unrented units might be made affordable to increase the supply of affordable housing in that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Diana Rios Dominguez, followed by Mary Ann Paliev.
First of all, thank you all for your service. You all show up month after month after month. You could be at home, you could be comfortable, you could be watching a favorite show, but you're here for us. So I do appreciate that. I'm a mom. I have a four-year-old and a six-year-old. I homeschool them. So once I got pregnant, my whole world changed, and I got into mom mode. I'm here to protect them. So I'm really here to support Irina, because I see her having a voice on next door, and she's getting shut out by these medias. You know, they just shut you off, and they just put it as spam. But if you want to talk about other topics that are approved, then they show. Right? So the reason I'm here is really to support her. I don't want to waste too much time, but I want to say that there is a reason why Hillsborough doesn't have those 5G towers. These are people who have great homes, great cars, probably have a lot of knowledge, and they fought to not have 5G towers. Let's look into why Hillsborough doesn't. Let's follow their suit. Encinitas, California, also fought against 5G tower. They were successful. So if we don't have knowledge on technologies and how they can affect our community, I get it, but we should have specialists dig deep and protect us, because there are safe options like fiber optic instead. So we should look at other options like fiber optic. That's what Encinitas did. So and also thanks for those who came out to speak up, because on behalf of my family and the community that have done research, we do know that 5G can cause harm. There's been a study by Dr. Martin Pell, who has summary of 5G can attack your nervous system, it messes with your hormones, your endocrine system, it can produce oxidative stress and free radical damage to your cells, attack the DNA cells. So there are studies, there's people who are passionate about it. It's just a matter of getting that information. And if you want, I have four articles here, and I could forward them to an email, and we can get it to the right person. The main thing here is technology is moving really fast. We have to take a step back and make sure that we put our citizens first and their health first. That's pretty much what I'm here to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last in-chamber speaker is Mary Ann Paliev.
I stand here? By the microphone. Sorry. I've been fighting this for two years now. I'm on my second year. I'm just so rattled about it, and as I sit here tonight, I'm thankful to have the time to say what I want to say. And it's mainly that I've been researching 5G for a long time, and I've been finding out that, like what she just said, this last speaker, I learned that birds drop dead after flying over 5G cell towers. 5G has an electromagnetic field around it, as in, as is in wireless cell towers and small wireless facilities. They say that small wireless facilities, well, they look really harmless. There's one on Peninsula they put on my block recently. I look down the street, and I think, oh, it looks okay. You know, it's just a long, it's a light pole that's already there with a light at the end, and then there are two little metal boxes at the top, and they look totally harmless. But the truth is that even small cell wireless facilities are deadly, and it's not fair to put them in areas where people live. People don't know the dangers, and they don't really seem to care, because I've talked to a lot of people in different city halls, I've talked to different people. And people, you know, they're very kind to you, but then my feeling is they don't care because they're not faced with having to live near it. I don't want to get cancer. I don't want to get cancer in a few years because I live near that thing. I don't want to go outside and be afraid all the time, which I have been. I don't want to be afraid to have company over for fear that if we sit in the backyard, they're going to get that 5G on them. You know, it's a lot of things like that, and people don't consider that. And when I go over to Oakland and I see all the huge towers in Oakland, which are everywhere, I feel so sorry for the people living in those homes, because they put the 5G tower right next to their home. And how can they be so stupid and selfish to do that? Anyway, I get really, I get really emotional when I talk about this stuff, because I think it's so unfair. I just think it's unfair. I have an article here, I've been researching a lot, and it says that these new small cell antennas are actually replacements for macro cell towers, and therefore, despite their small size, they are blazing with radiation, equivalent to pollution propagated by large towers with multiple antennas. So though they look harmless, they are not. And I really resent them putting them all over San Mateo. I've seen them, all signs all over San Mateo. I've seen the big one on Ninth Avenue. I've seen the one near the apartments that that other person was talking about, and they're just putting them all over. Who do they think they are? They want to put all of our lives in danger? I just don't get over it. You know, in the fifties and sixties.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. The next speaker is Diane Whitaker.
Good evening, council members. I'm going to change the topic. I really enjoy the Home Maintenance Awards. It's a council meeting I always try to come to every year. I enjoy seeing the different homes in the different neighborhoods. I will say, tonight, I was a little disappointed in that we only had a handful of neighborhoods that submitted an award winner. But I would like to mention or point out that the majority of those we saw tonight are tended to be older homes with distinct characteristics of different styles of architecture. And I wanted to make this comment, because I think these awards are chosen by the residents of those specific neighborhoods. And I think the homes they choose to celebrate indicate that there's an interest in the older historic homes, possibly historic homes, but the older homes that have, will save more character. So I wanted to mention this so that when, down the road, when you have a conversation, when you're talking about the general plan, and you start talking about the historic resources element, that you keep in mind that there's a large group, I won't say a majority, there's a large group of San Mateo residents that really appreciates the older homes. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to our remote attendees. The first speaker we have is Henry, followed by Jordan Grimes. Please go ahead, Henry.
My comments support the good work of Irina and Maria Mavridis to help the residents of San Mateo stand up to the wireless industry. Excuse me. Your city unfortunately took the bait from the wireless industry, accepted their propaganda, and passed local laws in two thousand and eighteen and twenty-one that are not properly balanced. Doesn't have to remain that way. In contrast, over two hundred residents from ten cities in Sonoma and Marin counties combined their efforts in two thousand and seventeen, studied the state and federal telecom laws, the FCC orders, and most importantly, the U.S. Courts of Appeals rulings that significantly trimmed those FCC orders down to size. Despite what Crown Castle, AT&amp;T, or Verizon might say, the truth is, the FCC has been a serial loser in federal courts, starting in two thousand and nineteen, and your laws don't reflect that. These Sonoma and Marin residents worked with their cities to convince their councils to pass protective wireless ordinances, local laws that allow WTFs, wireless telecommunications facilities, only in industrial, commercial, and mixed-use zones, not in residential zones. These local laws also include a Ninth Circuit standard requiring applicants to provide substantial written evidence that a significant gap in wireless telecommunications service actually exists before permitting any WTF. Why your law does it, I have no, doesn't do that, I have no idea. Many more requirements were added to preserve public safety, privacy, and residence property values. This has worked for over five years. There are no problems and no lawsuits in these cities. San Mateo could do the same. Hey, these residents also went to the state Capitol and got veto of wireless-friendly bills in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and twenty-one, and now again, it looks like in two thousand and twenty-three. All of this work preserved local control over WTFs for all California cities. So you have to understand that on Friday, the thirteenth, in August, two thousand and twenty-one, the wireless world irrevocably changed with the ruling in case twenty-one oh two five, EHT versus FCC. The D.C. Circuit judges stopped the FCC for the third time on the small cell agenda and mandated that the FCC complete all of the following work before any more rolloffs of these densified WTFs in the public right-of-way occur. This is what the judges said. We remand to the commission, the FCC, to provide a reasoned explanation for its determination that its guideline adequately protects against harmful effects from exposure to radio frequency microwave radiation. The FCC must in particular provide an explanation that its testing procedures work, which they don't, address the impacts of RF radiation on children, the health implications of long-term exposure to RF radiation, and they address the impacts in the environment. This really binds every city in the state of California. That is why there is no SEC Microwave Radiation Guideline over six thousand megahertz. This makes the Tenth Street WTF, which transmits at twenty-eight thousand megahertz, illegal. You're going to have to stop that permit, and these are the checks and balances are all about. We need to create a beneficial pause, giving the city the time to fix its local laws and fix this large problem for the community.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, council, Honorable Mayor. I wasn't planning on commenting, and I frankly can't even believe I have to do this, but I'm here to speak for the cell towers. Most of us aren't laudites. We enjoy having good cell service here in San Mateo and would in fact like for it to be better. I do however think we could do a better job educating our citizenry on cell towers, on the differences between ionizing and non-ionizing radiation, health risks, things of those nature. We should not be like Hillsborough, where you cannot get a cell signal to save your life. On the topic of vacant apartments on Delaware, I think it's highly unlikely that apartments are being kept vacant in order to meet TDM requirements. I think what's more likely is that apartments sometimes turnover. There are sometimes vacancies. That is a normal part of any real estate market, and I don't believe it's something. And on that final note, have a wonderful evening. Thank you as always for your time.
Thank you very much. We have no more speakers, Madam Mayor. We have no more speakers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. And as I mentioned, state law prohibits the council taking action on items that are not on the agenda, and so with that, we will need to close public comment period and move on to reports and announcements. Would anyone?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, before we do that, we do have our continued, no, we need to adjourn and then-
You have this one, then go to that.
So, so, reports and announcements, would anyone like to start?
Thank you through the mirror. I just have a couple quick, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Pardon me. I'd like to wish everyone a happy Transit Month. And the city is actually hosting an event coming up this Saturday, September 23rd, in the downtown San Mateo area, if people are so inclined. It's actually a larger event that begins in Menlo Park and takes the train into downtown San Mateo Station, and then onward to San Francisco, where there are some electric cowtrain models to view. It's kind of one of the first opportunities for members of the public to view models for the upcoming electrified cowtrain system. I look forward to seeing anyone who's interested in joining in. If you come to downtown San Mateo, there will be a scavenger hunt activity in our downtown, and it may be of interest to you to come by around 11 o'clock this Saturday, September 23rd. And additionally, of course, on Saturday, if that's not interesting to you, the city is also hosting a bayfront cleanup around Ryder Park, Seal Point Park, as it has for many years now, part of the broader California coastal cleanup initiative. If you're interested in doing that, I would invite you to take a look at the city's website for more information. So this Saturday is certainly a busy one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members with reports and announcements?
Councilmember Rain inspired me. So I just wanted to report that we'll be doing a cleanup along the lagoon. The point that we will go from is the wharf at, or the dock at Harbor Town off of Wharf Side. Anyone from the city would like to come and meet a considerable amount of our residents, feel free to do that. We'll give you a grabber to pick up trash.
Thank you for mentioning the bayfront cleanup. I've been to like five of the last eight or so, so looking forward to it. My daughter Maeve is a big proponent of the bayfront cleanup, so there's a plug for Maeve, and Maeve will be out there on Saturday. Also want to encourage people, if they haven't already, to come out to our Thrive San Mateo General Plan updates. We have the, what?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Is my mic now? So we have two more to go. The next one is this Wednesday, and the following is the following Thursday. So please check out thrive-sanmateo.org, and please attend that event. And then an ongoing plug for Thursday nights on B and our Friday night movie nights. We have two more of each, so please get out there and enjoy San Mateo. Thanks.
Depp, do you, Mayor, would you like to chime in?
Thank you very much, Mayor. First off, I would like to acknowledge for those of us in our community of the Jewish faith who celebrate Rosh Hashanah, it just passed a happy Rosh Hashanah, and acknowledge Yom Kippur coming up as a very important time. And then finally, on September 30th, during the day on B Street, encouraging all of our community to come out for the Fall Fest, which is being co-sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown San Mateo Merchants Association, and the city's involved. It's a lot of fun all day long. Thank you.
Thank you so much. City Manager, did you have an announcement?
I think you were going to take my thunder on the announcement.
Okay. Yes, we, the community has heard a lot about, you know, the possibility of the pursuit of neighborhood historic district, and the city was very proactive in standing up a webpage with resources and questions and answers. And I think that, you know, there's a question about what more the city can do in terms of facilitating public education about this topic, and so the question to our city manager, Alex, if you don't mind, if there's interest among the council in providing more of a format, and what question to staff is, do we have capacity to proactively educate on this issue and what, through what channels?
So, understanding that we've heard quite a bit from the community just regarding historical districts and making sure that everyone has the same accurate information, what we're doing is, as you mentioned, Mayor, we're building, we've built out a webpage specifically on historical districts, if you go to the city's website, but we're going to be beefing that up quite a bit and making it more robust. And so our acting Assistant City Manager Christina Horstberg and Zach Dahl will be working on that, and we'll be getting the information up there, I think in the next few days. Additionally, or maybe it might be a little bit more time, I'll buy a little bit more time, but additionally, what we want to do is have a community conversation, well, just have a community meeting where we can actually educate and inform the community as to the overall process and steps of what exactly it takes to establish historical districts, not only at the federal, state, but also a local registry at the local level. Right now, we're knee-deep in the general plan and also in housing element work, understanding that we're looking at having that community meeting probably right at the beginning of the new year, but in the meantime, we're going to be putting up educational information and materials for the community. That's our plan of attack.
Thank you so much for that. And October will be very meaty with our general plan conversations, and so looking forward to having that topic folded in. And I wanted to give a special appreciation to our Senator Josh Becker and his staff that really were the linchpin in helping turn on electricity to our parking garage at Kiku Crossing. So Kiku Crossing, as everyone knows, is the largest affordable housing project in the history of San Mateo. It is on dedicated city land, and it also comes with a brand-new parking structure that will net over 300 new parking spaces, include and bring, in addition to the, I'd say, 200 residential parking spaces, it has an additional 500 public parking spaces, and will be very instrumental in providing some more long-term parking options for employees downtown and as well as patrons. And so the city was really struggling with PG&E over the course of many months and saw numerous, to be specific, four schedule cancellations that ultimately cost this project 250,000 additional dollars, dollars that we do not want to spend on PG&E delays. And it was very important to have Senator Becker ultimately step in and help us close the schedule and get the lights turned on. So thank you for that, Senator. We are very, very appreciative. And then I think, you know, just to acknowledge some of the concerns that were raised in the room earlier, I think it would be helpful maybe to ask staff if we reach out about, you know, the ways in which maybe the general plan is speaking to questions about public safety and health in our planning for the future.
Acknowledge that, and we'll take that feedback back.
Thank you so much. Okay, so with that, we will adjourn the regular meeting and continue our special meeting. Madam Clerk, do you need time to make the switch?
No.
Okay, great. So stay with us, we'll be switching over.
And for the record, that item remaining from the special meeting-
Or I guess, good morning, Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash, I believe. Martin McTaggart, Deputy City Clerk with the City Clerk's Office. I just want to begin this presentation with some acknowledgements. Christian Almiger has been working in the City Clerk's Office as an intern since the summer, and without his support, we would not be able to provide this presentation to Council tonight, so I wanted to give him a quick shout-out. We've also been working with city staff. Samantha Weigel provided critical input on the survey design, as well as members of the city's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force, and members of the city council who responded to our requests for input. Just a quick overview of the agenda for tonight's presentation. We're going to kick things off discussing the methodology for the survey. We're also going to take a look at the sources of the data contained within the survey. We'll also provide a quick summary of the key findings as a result of this 2023 demography study, and then we will turn it over to the Council to provide feedback and any questions on the survey. So to start off, the purpose of the study is to evaluate how representative the city's boards and commissions are of the wider community. This is only the second time that the city has conducted this survey, with the initial survey being performed in 2017. At that time, city council directed staff to conduct this survey biannually. However, due to staffing limitation and external factors such as the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, staff have not been in a position to update this survey until today. Similar to the 2017 survey, this survey utilized much of the same format, including obtaining comparative data analysis with the 2020 census and the 2021 American Community Survey. Staff also had the ability to compare response data from the 2017 survey results in order to help identify any potential trends over this six-year period. At the outset of this survey, staff sought to utilize the key themes developed within the original 2017 survey, and also identify opportunities for more inclusive language and questions to help meet the original goal, being transparency and inclusivity. To this end, the City Clerk's Office staff engaged with the DEI Task Force, individual members of the city council, and staff from the city manager's office. Overall, staff updated the survey questions, which we'll get into a little later, and included committee members within the scope of this survey. Staff are requesting Council to, number one, provide their feedback on the results of the 2023 demography study. Number two, provide direction on opportunities to further diversify representation on boards, commissions, and committees. And finally, also to consider staff's plans to bolster recruitment efforts in areas of lower representation. And just to, before we move on to the survey, just to provide a little bit of parameters here, staff initially set off to survey our advisory members from July through September of this year. Staff reached out to appointed members of city advisory bodies, and we were pleased to report a 100% response rate from the city's boards and commissions. And we will now move into the findings of the survey. So to begin, we looked at the duration of residence within San Mateo, and to write a comparative analysis with our 2017 survey, the average number of years lived in San Mateo for boards and commissioners was 25, with over 80% residing for over a decade. The results from this year's survey show that the average number of years lived in San Mateo dropped on to 20 years, with only 70% living in San Mateo for over a decade. Another focus area of the demography study was age. As this slide shows, the key finding is some general representation of those aged from 24 through 44, as this was seen in the 2017 study, and the boards and commission members are overrepresented of those 65 and over, and underrepresented of those 24 and When it comes to race and ethnicity, the 2023 survey continues to show from the 2017 results that people of color are not proportionally represented on the city's boards and commissions. This study also reveals decreases since 2017 in those who identify as Asian and Hispanic, and an increase in those who identify as white. As seen on this slide in the 2023 survey, zero respondents identified as Hispanic, Latino, or any form of Spanish origin, while almost a quarter of San Mateo's population identifies as such. As with the 2017 study, we looked into the current living arrangements of our advisory members, meaning whether they are owner-occupied or renter-occupied. Between 2017 and 2023, we saw a 5% increase in the percentage of members that are renters. As this slide shows, according to 2021 American Community Survey, 51.9% of households in San Mateo are owner-occupied, whereas 82.9% of advisory members reside in owner-occupied homes. Moving on to income, the key finding was that while in 2017, around 70% of advisory members fell at or above the median household income, in 2023, over 80% of members fall above the median household income of $136,837. Another focus area of the study was languages spoken other than English at home. The 2023 demography study showed a 3% decrease in the number of languages spoken at home by advisory members. As can be seen on the bar chart on this slide, 57.4% of San Mateo speak a language other than English at home, whereas only 17% of advisory members do. On this slide, we dig a little bit deeper into the language spoken by our bilingual advisory members. According to the American Community Survey in 2021, 17.8% of San Mateo residents speak Spanish at home, 7.8% an Indo-European language, 16% speak Asian and Pacific Island languages, and one per speak other languages. While our multilingual advisory members are underrepresented, the Asian and Pacific Islander and Spanish-language-speaking communities are also underrepresented. A new question that was introduced to the survey was at the recommendation of the DEI Task Force, which was to consider the age ranges of potential dependents living at home of our advisory members. The survey responses revealed that 34% of advisory members have dependents living at their home, which is roughly five percentage points higher than the number of households in San Mateo with dependents. And this chart on this slide also shows a breakdown of the age ranges of dependents, with 5 to 14 years being the largest. The survey also considered gender identity as a focus area. The key findings from the 2023 survey study show that advisory members who identify as female exceed those who identify as male by almost 2 to 1. The percentage of female members have increased from 54% in 2017 to 61% in 2023. Excuse me. The percentage of female members have increased from 57% in 2017 and to 61% in 2023. And just a note there that the survey question that was sent to our advisory members allowed the option to write in, to allow for self-identification, whereas the American Community Survey and the census reports data only by male or female. In terms of education, the 2023 survey also showed the majority of advisory members are highly educated, with three out of four having a graduate or professional degree, which can, in contrast to San Mateo's general population, which is about 1 in 4 hold a graduate or professional degree, and this represents a 7% increase from 2017. When reviewing the survey design, members of the city council recommended, given the transition to district-based elections, that there may be merit in looking into how representative our advisory bodies are of the five districts. And staff were able to gather this information or this data point utilizing the information that's provided by the advisory members. On this slide, we see that almost half of the advisory members reside in District 1, whereas 20%- whereas 20% reside in District 2, 1 in 16 reside in District 4, 1 in 10 reside in District 5, and roughly 15% reside in District 3. On this slide, we provide you some of the key summaries from this survey, including duration of residence, as we saw a reduction in the length of residency in the city of San Mateo. As far as age is concerned, representation of 65 and above age range increased, and a decrease for the 25 to 54 age range categories. Regarding race, overall, we saw less representation of people of color. For housing status, there was a 5% shift from homeownership to renting. As far as income goes, we saw higher-income categories are consistently the most represented, holding at over 50%. Language, we saw a 3% decrease in bilingual members. And for dependents, we saw 34% of members have dependents living in their home, and we have no comparative data for 2017. Gender, there appears to be more commissioners who identify as female. And finally, for educational attainment, we have seen a 7% increase in the number of advisory members holding postgraduate degrees. And at this point, we would turn it over to the City Consul. Just as a reminder, we are looking for feedback from the Consul on the demography study results. Also, looking for direction from Consul on opportunities to further diversify representation in our advisory bodies, as well as comments and feedback on staff's plan to bolster recruitment efforts in the areas of lower representation. The agenda report for this item discussed some options to bolster recruitment efforts, which includes providing bilingual materials on the role and benefits of serving, seeking additional partnerships with community organizations such as school districts, parent groups, neighborhood associations, businesses, nonprofit, rental housing providers, and groups in underrepresented communities. We also noted that digital advertising through the city's social media channels may be an opportunity for us to provide some effective method of targeting potential applicants. And at this time, we'll pass it over for questions from Consul.
Okay, questions from Consul. Who would like to start? Please do so. Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you, through the mayor. And thank you, Martin, for the presentation, and shout-out to Christian. Thank you for his help as well. I was, I am, is, uh... Do we have data on others who have applied to boards or commissions but did not get appointed?
We do have a record of the applications that we received, and I'm looking to Patrice here, I believe, as far as demography goes. When we moved to our Agenda Management System, PrimeGov, that's when we started adding some demography information, so there may be some data there.
Yes, that was a new, we, through PrimeGov, we started a new software program called Committee Management, and we changed our application at that time to have optional, three simple demographic questions, not this depth. And so we probably could pull a few pieces from that, but it was not yet widely embraced on the application. So we remove them from the application when they go to the interview process, so it's blind.
Thank you. Could we, are there any, would there be any issues with us in asking each applicant to a board or commission optionally to provide the same information that we have asked our current board members and commissioners to share in this survey? Going forward?
Sure, we could discuss that. One of the first concerns that pops into my head is that we're trying to increase recruitment and reach out more, and it could be seen as a, like, why do you want to know all this about me? So, I don't, it's certainly something we could ask for their optional agreement to fill it out.
Thank you. No further questions at this time.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, through the mayor. This is such a great effort, and I particularly appreciate the trend information, because it's so telling and actionable. My one question is, when you were thinking about the dependents question, which I think is a very strong one, did you think about elder dependents, not just younger dependents? Because so many people are taking care of their parents or loved ones who are elderly, either who live with them or who live nearby. And I think that's a time constraint that would be interesting to think about.
Sure. So this, just to clarify, the question on dependents, that was at the recommendation of the DEI Task Force. And the question did include the age ranges of potential dependents. I believe that there were a number of age ranges on that question that aligned with the American Community Survey question. So that's, we use that data to have a comparative analysis what the overall representation is of the wider community versus what our advisory members shake out to be. And I believe that elder or individuals over a certain age were represented on that question.
Then I would, thank you. I can comment later. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I might be getting into comment here, but I guess I'd like to understand or have us look at, as a Consul and a city, how to do better outreach to people who speak Spanish as a primary language. You know, I was at Mayor Lee's event for the General Plan last week, and, you know, it's a very, very Spanish-heavy neighborhood. I saw that when I went to see the movie night three days later. But we had no one in the room that needed a translator or spoke Spanish as a first language. So, I mean, I think, I guess this is more of a comment, sorry. But I think I'd like to see or have us work towards really engaging the Spanish-speaking community better and bringing them into these roles and bringing them into our meetings.
Yeah, I can touch on that briefly. So as was identified in the staff report, we can take a look at some of the models and approaches taken by neighboring cities, the option to provide some materials, bilingual materials. We may be able to follow the Redwood City model, where they have some information that's available for members of the community in multiple languages. We could take a look at that as one potential option.
Just building from there, I think trusted community partners, so those in our Latinx community, whether they're community-based organizations or different groups, it's really stakeholder mapping and being able to identify those members in the community, where they can, you know, people want to go where their friends are at. And so, rather than meeting with a city or government official, it's always great when you're invited by another friend and a trusted partner at the same time. So, there's different ways and avenues of being able to really conduct outreach and engagement with specific sub-populations in our community. And I think we can utilize some of those best practices and building those networks and those relationships at the same time. So that's duly noted.
Councilmember Hedges, any questions?
Yeah, I'm still trying to get my head around the low numbers from District 4. I've got more in the line of comments. I've read this report thoroughly. Quite frankly, I was a little bit embarrassed by it. So, I'll have some comments when we get to that portion.
Thank you. I guess I, I wanted to ask or pose a more of a kind of a macro question to my colleagues about, you know, why do you think this data is important? What, you know, what is the purpose that this holds, and what are we trying to achieve? Because I think, you know, this is an inherited process, and I think, you know, being a new Consul, seeing the data presented today, I think it's, I think it's an important question to articulate for ourselves and each other in the community. What does this mean, and what are we trying to accomplish? Councilmember Hedges?
Well, I think first it gives us a roadmap. But beyond that, I think it's incumbent on us to figure out what the roadblocks on that map are. Because there's definitely got to be some roadblocks that we haven't completely understood. I'll just give you one example. D4, we had a person on the DEI Committee, and that person resigned for health reasons. So Mike Nash came to me and asked me if I knew anybody. I searched, couldn't find anyone who was willing to do it. So I got on it. I was on for a few months, and then I became a City Council member and had to resign. And I reached out to a person that I knew, and actually had to really coax them to get on it, because they're busy. And they didn't last that long. He sent me an email saying he was sorry he had to get off of it, but he's an engineer, and he didn't think he was really fit. He didn't think he fit in well. I didn't agree with him, but it's not me, it's him. So, finding the roadblocks to getting people on these, I think, is very important. And I think we know where we have to work from these, from these, from these demographic surveys.
Well, you know, I, I believe that this is important work that gives us a bit of a barometer as to how well are we representing the people of San Mateo? And how much of a connection are we making between all of who make up our city and those who are making decisions and, you know, for the future of our city and the rules by which we live? I think this is, you know, a parallel to the districting process we just underwent. One of the ideas behind the districting process is to acknowledge that if, under an at-large process, it can be demonstrated that we're not getting a fairly, you know, equal representation. If we're not hearing from underrepresented communities, if there are underrepresented communities within the city that don't seem to be able to get a voice, then the districting process might be able to help us split up so that we can align with parts of our community that does band together, give them, through the districting process, an opportunity to vote for a voice on a more local level. So that process allowed us to take a step forward, I feel. I think this is, there's a parallel here. Clearly, when we look at the demographics of our boards and commissions, we're not, we're, you know, we don't, we don't have the full representation of those who are in our city. So, as Councilmember Hedges said, I think it's imperative to look at obstacles there, to see what we can do to work toward making those who make decisions for the city better reflect the body of who makes up our city.
I don't have a lot to add, other than representation is important. I think if you look at what's happened with the city since we've gone to districting, we've seen a shift now that we're having representation locally. You know, prior to that, you could probably go back and look at City Council surveys and see the majority of City Council was west of the El Comunal Real and from primarily white or more affluent families. As a city, it's important that we represent everyone, and we need to, you know, want to encourage people to get more involved. And so, I mean, I think that's what this is kind of showing us. It's helping us roadmap, you know, how to get a better representation of everyone from a citywide perspective. And I think there's always going to be a trend for more affluent people to be on boards and commissions, and I'm sure you'll find that in every city. And that's because they can. I mean, you know, if you're a mother with young children and living, you know, paycheck to paycheck, you don't necessarily have the time to go and be on a commission. And so, you know, there's, that's why it trends that way, I'm sure. But it gives us, you know, kind of a target to try to help better integrate everyone and represent the city better.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, through the mayor. The only thing I would add to all the comments made is that boards and commissions are a great training ground, and we need to be developing leaders, future leaders. And this is an absolutely wonderful way to do it. So we want to continue to keep that a priority.
Great. Councilmember Hedges, something to add?
We're going through the City Academy now and the Police City Academy. Have we kept demographic records of who's attending those? That might give us some insight on who's applying for the commissions.
I don't, we do not have that data. We can check into it.
I think it would be illuminating.
Great. So, and I think, you know, it's helpful to hear that everyone in, on the dais affirm the importance of this exercise and the value that it holds. And I think, you know, if I can summarize sort of broadly, there's, you know, there's our shared goal of promoting meaningful community engagement, right, that we do a better job serving community when we are lifting all voices, and when our leadership bodies are reflective of the community, and full well acknowledging that boards and commissions are a very real pipeline to that leadership. And so, it, you know, the, you know, the efforts that our City Clerk's Office have made to establish this, this survey, and continue iterating on it are, I think, very important. And so, we'll, I'll reserve my comments for later, but I think if, without further ado, we can open it up for our public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. We have one speaker, Owen Day.
Good evening, members of Consul. My name's Owen Day. I wasn't planning to speak tonight. I was just planning to listen and observe. But I, I think quite frankly, we, we all knew what was generally going to be on this survey. However, I do think that it's important, we saw it presented on the record, and have exact figures from which to move forward. I think that, I don't have any of the answers here, but I do want to express my support as a community member for trying to increase diversity on our boards and commissions. Specifically, I believe, for me, socioeconomically, I think that in San Mateo, we are one of the wealthiest counties in the United States. And as the largest city in that county, it is, quite frankly, our responsibility to lead efforts to uplift voices that have been historically silenced in San Mateo, notably some residents of color, low-income residents, residents who, English is not their first language. And I think that perhaps one of those steps could be outreach, but also trying to make meeting dates and meeting attendance for commissions, and by extension, City Council, more accessible to more people. And I think that that might be a good goal that would allow for a greater diversity of residents to participate in our local government. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no other speakers.
Thank you. With that, we'll close public comment. Does it make sense to put the questions up on the screen, please? Thank you. Okay, who would like to start with some comments? Okay.
Okay. Feedback on the 2023 demography study results. I think I would echo Councilmember Hedges a bit in saying, I'm disappointed. I think that the council and this city has shown a specific interest in, you know, being more diverse and inclusive and seeking greater diversity in its representation. I don't see that necessarily being reflected overall here in these results. So I'm hoping that we can improve. I would agree with staff's recommendations on ideas to bolster recruitment in underrepresented communities. I think, you know, those definitely seem like next steps that we can take. I'm excited to see us take some of the steps. I would also like to see if the city could at least like look into the possibility of capturing at least optional data from all candidates to paint a broader picture. Because I think one question I have when we look at these results is, you know, who's not getting appointed? You know, I think that's a question that we have to, you know, see if we can answer another time, perhaps. And I'll go into that a little more in just a moment. I have some additional thoughts on, and I don't want to mess up here, comments and feedback on staff's plans to bolster recruitment areas. Yeah, okay, I guess I, I might bounce around a little bit between two and three, and I hope that won't be too confusing or disruptive. But I do have some ideas, I think, in addition to staff's recommendation on how to increase I think it would be cool to have, I think one overall idea is, could, you know, find ways to potentially raise the profile of our boards and commissions and, you know, like I think the, giving more folks in San Mateo a sense of what it means to serve and potential benefits that can come from it. I was thinking we have an annual celebration for those who do serve on our boards and commissions. And I sort of wonder if there might be an opportunity to have like a broader open house in the city to give, like, give people a sense of how, you know, all the different boards and commissions we have, you know, maybe just one night, like a taste and talk kind of event in the library or somewhere else to open to the public, to give people a sense of what boards and commissions we do have. And maybe some of our current board and commission members could show up and talk a little bit about their experience and why they do it. I think we could consider having translators, a translation option at anything that, you know, I think to build on what was mentioned by staff on materials. I do just want to mention that I think, I understand that the Thrive Alliance has some capacity to offer translators at public meetings. And so, the city may be able to avail itself of that service. I think that would be really important for the prospect of enabling somebody for whom English is a second language to serve on a board or commission. I mean, I've been thinking about how much English I have to read to do a good job on council and back when I was a commissioner. And so, I think there may be an opportunity to partner with some broader organizations to make our communication and outreach and even the experience of sitting on a board or commission more accessible. As Commissioner, sorry, as Councilmember Hedges mentioned, I think kind of alluded to when he talked about this City Services Academy, I do think, you know, we saw on the staff report that the, those on, who have been graduates of that program and the leadership program are emailed when there's a vacancy, and that's great. I almost wonder if there's, you know, a way that we can strengthen the pathway from these programs to boards and commissions. I don't know how much effort we might currently put into, you know, for example, letting people know about vacancies that might exist like while they're in the program itself and kind of like nudging them like, hey, you know, I imagine there's a bit of that at this point. But I also wonder if there might be an opportunity to give some sort of, you know, like extra points. I want to be careful here, but I think like when considering applicants, if they have participated in Services Academy or Leadership, I think there's, there might be an opportunity to reward those folks with a bit more consideration for open positions. But I have some other thoughts on that, too, and I want to be careful. I also think we would, it would be good to lean a little harder on current council members and current board and commission members to refer others who they meet in the community and think would be a great fit to apply. And if they, and, you know, maybe they can get some kind of city swag as a reward if they happen to refer somebody who ends up on a board or commission, maybe a City of San Mateo mug or something. That might be pretty neat. And just, I had some thoughts on like potentially more benefits to boards and commission members like that. I think like anything we can think of that wouldn't be too expensive, right? But I think one thing that's jumped out at me is childcare. You know, I think like, like the translation services, to me, that stands out as, you know, if there were a way we could potentially offer that, you know, or like partially subsidize it or something. I imagine, I think that speaks a little bit to a population we know has dependents at home. I also think like, back to the raising the profile idea of boards and commissioners, if there were like awards that could maybe be given at the dinner, the annual dinner, like a board or commissioner member of the year. I'm not exactly sure what the criteria would have to be for something like that, but I think that would be a pretty, I just think like, I guess like, I'm excited about the open house idea because I think like, it'd be cool to find ways to get commissioners and board members out a little more and talking with the community about why they're doing what they're doing. Okay, so those are some ideas on like, you know, maybe how to try and help with recruiting and give people a sense of like why it's like, you know, might be interesting outside of like serving their community and maybe like with the actual topics that the board or commission might deal with to get people involved and a little bit more excited. I do, before I forget, want to mention kind of another big piece to this puzzle, I think, which is that, you know, even if, you know, if we're able to recruit and get more, you know, folks from a diverse spectrum of the city to apply for boards and commissions, the city council is still the body that selects those applicants. And, you know, while I'm sure each of our council members believe in increasing the diversity and representation, I appreciate the mayor kind of, you know, ensuring that we're aligned on this as a council priority. You know, there, even unconscious biases can exist and present challenges to making strides on these numbers. And given that it's an existing priority and given that results don't appear to, haven't, you know, haven't improved as much as we'd like, I feel like I'd like to see if there's something the council can do to take a look at its selection process and consider ways in which that could be more intentional to appoint more board members and commissioners that represent underrepresented communities, especially if we do see some success in getting more applicants. Perhaps by adopting procedures that could just reduce the possibility of even unconscious bias and other obstacles from helping us reach this goal. I understand that our own county's board of supervisors has recently made changes in this vein. And so, I would like to ask council if they would be interested in to, you know, continuing to look into things in that vein, some ideas of what our county might be doing and what other maybe Bay Area regional cities might be doing to move the needle on that side of it. I don't think, you know, I think we could, there might be an opportunity to pilot something. And I think that could make a difference, too. So those are my comments.
I've already provided feedback on the results of the demographic studies. I think they're eye-opening and in not a good way. Direction, when I was on the DEI Task Force for the short time I was on it, I championed stipends for people to attend meetings. I also championed doing away with any kind of requirement, being a citizen, to get on the boards and commissions. Just a note from my past, without going into a lot of detail, I found that we were training people for barber and cosmetology work at our community colleges that didn't have social security numbers and they couldn't go to work. And I'm not going to go how I did it, but I got that changed. And in changing it, I just didn't change work for those licensees, all licensees, eight million jobs in the state of California. So it can be done. We found a way to do it. And this is not probably going to be real popular with the staff, but if we really want to bring people that are working maybe two jobs, we might want to think about having some weekend commission meetings, maybe rotating staff where they have a day off during the week. One of the big complaints about MTC was, especially when we're going through CASA and other things, is that the average person who's working can't get there at 10 o'clock in the morning. And so, they started having a number of evening meetings. So when the call goes out that you need to alter your schedule for your community, at times, we have to do it, even if it's painful. And so, I think those are my direct comments on what we might be able to do. And just reducing the requirement for citizenship might encourage people to say, look, they're thinking of me. I don't have to hide. And so, feedback on this, I think the staff did a good job. And a lot of this was input from the DEI Committee. And so, I'm very high on all of it. I think this is a really good job and an eye-opening job. Thank you.
I echo what everyone said about number one. It's obviously disappointing. I would have thought that during the pandemic, we may have seen a slide to getting better. And instead, it seems like, unfortunately, whiter and wealthier was the trend since the last survey. So we need to fix that. As far as number two, I think two and three are hard to discern between the two, but I mean, obviously, we want to make sure that we're finding opportunities to continue to diversify our representation. Made some notes as to what I was thinking about with that. One I've already mentioned was multilingual surveys and outreach, you know, Spanish, Mandarin, and any other language that we deem, you know, fits our population need. Continuing to work our city services and get people involved in our city services from these different demographics will then kind of be the farm or feed us into future commissioners. You know, we have a lot of meetings that are, you know, specific locations, like the senior commission always meets at the senior center, but, you know, then there are ones like Public Works and Community Relations, Sustainability and Infrastructure, Park and Rec. Those all tend to be here in City Hall. And I've often wondered if we had those as evening meetings and moved them around occasionally. Like if we're talking about a rec center project in Shoreview, we should go to a location in Shoreview. And like, I know the library meets at the main library, but maybe the library should be going to different neighborhoods. If we go to different neighborhoods, one thing I can tell you from living here in San Mateo a long time is, it's very rare, if you go to these commission meetings, that anybody's there beside commissioners. I mean, there are obviously exceptions like the planning commission, but, you know, people don't go to the park and rec commission meetings and not in very large turnout. And so, I wonder if by potentially making sure these meetings are at a time that's more accessible and bringing them to their neighborhood when it applies to their neighborhood, we can then drive people to the meetings, just as we're driving people to our general plan meetings, for example. And again, like getting them in the meeting is what's going to plant that seed to, hey, you know, sometimes it's going to be, I'm not happy, but at least it's pushing them to, I'm not happy and you know what, I'm going to do something about it. That's what plants that seed. Or maybe it's, I really like where this is going and I want to get involved. But either way, I think going to the people, if we can, with commission meetings is a solid idea to reach out to different neighborhoods that are underrepresented right now. Sorry about that. And then the other thing that I made a note of is spotlighting commissioners. So, you know, I think this has been brought up, but, you know, I couldn't tell you who a lot of, like, I can't tell you a lot of commissioners that work for the city. And I go through periodically and look through to see who I know. But it would be interesting to see if we could use social media and spotlight a commissioner once a month or every two weeks. And that way, you know, we're giving them a little bit of glory, but also having other people think, oh, you know, I think I'd like to be involved in that, too. So I think those are just a few spitballing ideas, but overall, I'm agreeing with what everyone's saying and that we need to do better and we need to work to get better.
Deputy Mayor, please go ahead.
Thank you, through the mayor. First off, I think this is a rich conversation and it points to the great work that staff has done in pulling this together and particularly in identifying the trends and digging deep. Because that's where you can do something and that's what this conversation is all about. So I think congratulations to staff and everyone involved. As I said earlier in my question, I think there's an opportunity to dig into people who are not only caring for elders in their home, but outside. I hear from so many younger families that they're taking care of their kids and they're taking care of their parents. And the parents may not be living with them, but it's taking a lot of time. So I think there's opportunity somewhere to think. As Councilmember Lorraine mentioned, and I believe City Manager Katician mentioned earlier, at the end of the day, it's member get member, or it's friend get friend, or it's neighbor get neighbor. So anything we can do to really bolster that, and I would ask, I'm sure staff is already looking at it, but what efforts are other cities on the peninsula, in the Bay Area, across California, across the nation? I've got to believe this is not unique to who we are. What are creative things that people are trying? And can we try that as well? And I think Councilmember Lorraine brought up the idea of what can we do about childcare? I bet that is a huge issue for a lot of people. Don't know what can be done, but I think it's something worthwhile looking at as part of our efforts. I really liked Councilmember Newsom's comment just now about spotlighting commissioners, just making people realize that, oh, just making people realize that, oh, so-and-so's doing it. I didn't know that. If they can do it, maybe I can do it. And it's also just a wonderful way of spotlighting people in our community. And as a number of our council members have mentioned, moving the location of meetings. I know when I was on the library board, we not only did the library meetings at, at the main library, but we went to the marina and that brought other people in. So I think that's, that's a great opportunity. So I would encourage staff, but I think we all have to get involved in and take responsibility and not just tell staff, go fix the problem. Because the staff is working hard on it. We also have to get a lot more involved. So I would welcome staff's recommendation as to other things they've thought, anything we come up with. I think it's, it's really the, I get my friends, neighbors get neighbors, that's really going to help us. But thank you very much for all that's been done.
Thank you. I, I was also very saddened to see the results of the demographic report. And, and I have, you know, my lived experience serving on the city council in the previous, in the previous body. All of my council colleagues lived in District One, and I was the sole council member and representative that was not in District One. And, and on this body, I am the only person of color. So I appreciate Councilmember Newsom specifically naming the problem that we're trying to solve, which is having a more socio-economically and racially representative, um, body of commissioners. And, and how important that is and the shared goal that we have of improving our community engagement strategies as well as our pipeline to leadership. And that really being the, the, um, the shared aim of this, this process. So with that, you know, I, I have several thoughts on, in terms of ideas, and I really appreciate the substantive ideas that have already surfaced in this conversation. So, um, Alex talked about stakeholder mapping and, and I think, I think that there's a really important distinction between communication strategies and marketing strategies versus bolstering support and, and resources to empower trusted, trusted community members to actually actively and proactively support engagement and recruitment efforts for the city. And that, that's, um, that model has been built. It exists in, in many, in many community nonprofits and our public health department uses it as well. And I, I personally think that a strategy like this would, would really be supported by partnering with an organization like, for example, Casa Circulo Cultural, which at this point does not have an active presence in, in San Mateo. And a lot of the Latino engagement that we do in San Mateo is heavily reliant on the, the capacity and strategies employed by PCRC. And PCRC, while being a wonderful organization that I wholeheartedly support, is, is not a Latino-led organization. And a lot of the, the, and there's, you know, clear tech, you know, skill set differences and expertise differences in, in these organizations. And what strikes me is that there's sort of a, a gap in, in our partnership suite in terms of like the nonprofits that we go to, to, to support outreach to the Latinx community. There, there's the, sort of the North B Street Business Association, but that's a very, you know, very finite, location-based, sort of stakeholder group. And, and so it seems to me that in San Mateo, there's an opportunity to expand community-based partnership opportunities specifically targeting Latino organizations. And I, for me, the go-to in this county would be Casa Circulo Cultural. And I think that there's also an interesting opportunity to add a criteria question in our interview process that explicitly asks candidates about their experience and, um, and value add in terms of community engagement. What are you, you know, what ways are you currently engaging with the community? What are the, you know, sort of connections to community that you would bring? If we think about the roles of commissioners and, and them being a, you know, a sort of a vehicle back to the community, that, that seems like an important criteria to evaluate commissioners on as a standardized question. Number three, I, I was interested in, in Councilmember Lorraine's idea about ways that we can better tie together the, um, the City Service Academy and the ESL Academy with commission recruitment. And wondering if there's an opportunity to even add an additional day that would provide a panel opportunity to meet with commissioners and talk with them, do a Q and A, ask commissioners, what's their favorite project that they worked on? What's the most frustrating project they've worked on? How they became a commissioner? How long they've served? I also think, you know, as we've talked about, there's better ways to highlight commissioners, especially outgoing commissioners. We, I would love to see a more standardized process for us to, to, you know, to fully acknowledge the, the contributions of, of our commissioners, which I think is also supports the front-end recruitment. And, um, let's see, I, I really did, I like the idea of having more rotating locations. You know, I've, for a long time, been talking about the, um, the potential of us establishing standardized town halls in districts and in, and, and doing a, um, you know, district-level town hall that could also support recruitment for, for commission seats. And, you know, and I think about the, you know, the town halls that we've been doing through the general plan and how there are these, sometimes like these misses in terms of recruiting for other things, like recruiting for CERT participation, recruiting for, uh, you know, for City Services Academy, recruiting for commission. And I, you know, it's one of those things where I feel like we have a chance to tie all those things together. People are showing up. When they're showing up, we should have a packet ready for them with, you know, these are the ways that you can plug into the city. Tables with people that they can show, T-shirts wearing, you know, how, you know, ask me about volunteering with the city. Those are, you know, those are things that I think that we can package much better and more intentionally. When we're bringing community to events, there should be a kit that has recruitment opportunities and engagement opportunities, not just for, for commission seats, but across many other facets of the organization. And, um, let's see, that was three. I, the, the results also, for me, really underscore the, the point of our council priorities wanting to pursue stipends and wanting to lift the, the citizenship barriers that might be inhibiting participation, that, you know, we really won't know if that can change or if the, if the recruitment will change until we lift these barriers, which I look forward to those conversations about charter amendments. And so for me, this is, again, another, yet another piece of evidence to support the direction that I think this council is already interested in taking. I wanted to lift up the, again, the importance of the creation of the youth commission seats, the fact that from 2017, I'm sorry, 2019, 2017, right? It was the first one. 2017 to 2023, so five years. So just for the last five years that we have tracked this data, there's been zero representation for any community member under 24 years old. And, you know, I work very closely with youth. I meet with youth almost on a weekly basis through my internship program. And, um, you know, and the youth were really the driving force in terms of changing the institutional makeup of commissions by, you know, through the creation of the two dedicated youth commission seats. And, um, and I look forward to us continuing to expand that effort. And I, I guess I'm, you know, I hope we'll get an update soon about the process and how that's going in recruitment, because it's so important that we get that right.
We will be, we're, um, the application period closed. We got, uh, what we would consider a substantial number of applications. There are a few that we need to vet if they met the criteria. So we will include in your report this week how many applicants we actually have and then outline the process.
Great. Substantial is good. That's very encouraging. Thank you. So, Kit, recruiting youth, okay. And I guess, um, I kind of spoke to this, but, um, but I will say that I would, I think that the, there is also another opportunity to think about, you know, what, what we're doing, what we're tracking and how, how this is, is connected to a much broader county-level conversation. And so, you know, I'm interested in looking to the county in terms of, you know, what practices they're employing or piloting even to, to address implicit bias in the process. But also I think, you know, as San Mateo has shown leadership on many issues, environmental and sustainability policies, you know, affordable housing, you know, across many things, DEI is another area where I hope that we can continue raising the bar. And, you know, I think that it would be interesting for, for this city, as we have now honed over two iterations, I think, a really strong survey, how, you know, how this could be part of a bigger conversation with other city managers and creating a more standardized county-wide survey that, that would track across the county what commission makeup looks like. So, you know, I think that there's a broader regional leadership opportunity for the city to play here as well. So those are my comments on this topic. How are we doing? Okay, Councilmember Hedges.
I really appreciated Vice Mayor Nash's comment about childcare. And so I'm again going to bring up the idea of stipend, because stipend would help with somebody, uh, being able to afford childcare.
Yes, and we're, the stipend is part of the charter amendment conversation, right? If, if we could weave that magic wand and do it overnight, you know, I'm sure we'd have the votes, but we, we have a process to follow by following the charter and any charter amendments. Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you. I just, um, I appreciate your comments, uh, very much. Uh, I appreciated you supporting, looking into what the county's doing with regard to, I think, like, you know, process on, on the side of those making the selection and seeing what might be available to, to help further these goals on that end. And I just wanted to, like, ask my other council members if there might be a third interested in, in looking more into that, just to make sure that we do it.
So, I mean, I guess, Martin, would you mind giving us some feedback in terms of what you heard, actions that had consensus around in it, just to make sure that we're tracking on where council is, majority is?
Sure. And feel free to correct me if there's anything I overlooked, please feel free to point that out. One of the action items or takeaways from this, we have as, with regards to the, the topic of potential unconscious bias, looking at the selection criteria from what has recently been put in place from the Board of Supervisors. We also have, as Mayor Lee mentioned, further discussion on potential charter amendments to look at the opportunities for stipend as it relates to potential opportunities regarding childcare as a potential barrier. Another note or takeaway that I have here is we are going to look at the potential for adult dependence as a potential barrier to, um, representation or participation in the advisory bodies. And we'll take a look at what that may mean as it relates to the, the design of the survey. I also have here an ask that we are going to look at adding a criteria question to, offer a standardized question for applicants with regards to their experience and value-added for engaging with the community. Looking at opportunities to, staff will consider the feasibility of having the commission board member, board meetings and committee meetings rotate location based on the topic being presented to that body. I also have the note here that we're going to look at, potentially looking at some options for a standardized, standardized survey of demography countywide, not just within the city of San Mateo. Apologies if I missed a few others. My notes are quite extensive, but we will follow up on all the direction that we received from, from council.
Okay. I think that's a great start. So, I mean, one of the specific things was like thinking about the sort of panel discussion for commissioners at the City Services Academy. Another one was, um, this, I mean, the stakeholder mapping and, and exploring community partnerships to, specifically with Latino organizations. And then the town hall, sort of global idea.
I'm sure you have it, but Commissioner Spotlight would be a good one, too.
Through the mayor, I wanted to just offer on that item, um, Communications Manager Samantha Feigl and I were discussing this earlier today, some potential options for spotlighting commissioners. And we were looking at potentially having, using our social media platforms, having short-form interviews with members of our commissions, kind of explaining why they got involved with a commission, why they're serving on a commission, as, as the council mentioned, and what do you find most engaging about this activity and really elevating the role?
Thank you. Okay, it sounds like you have what you need. And I think, you know, I would just like to leave everyone with a thought that the way that we conduct ourselves is telegraphing to future leaders what, you know, what our city is about. And, you know, in, in the day of heightened antisemitism, heightened anti-Asian hate, I, you know, heightened LGBTQ plus discrimination, I, I think it's, you know, really important for us to take up the charge of, of broadening the pipeline and making sure that our, you know, our connection points to community are legitimized through, through representative community engagement processes. So thank you so much for this very, very fruitful conversation. And with that, I guess we can adjourn. Thank you.